Okay, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the June 9th, 2022 Board of Selectmen Meeting, which is, again, both virtual and in person, and it's good to see people back in the room here. It's usually about four or five of us, so that's good. As always, we'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands.
For which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for the board meeting, regular meeting of April 28th, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of April 28th, 2022?
Lauren Raven, oh, sorry, Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of May 26th, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
And finally, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of May 26th, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. Lots of special meetings, we're doing building committees for Central Middle School, and now Julian Curtis and Old Greenwich, so this is going to be going on all summer, so thanks for your patience. Okay, we're on a tight schedule today because we have a special meeting, again, for interviews at 11 o'clock, so I'll try and get through this really quickly. The updates, I'll start with the first selectmen's. The ribbon-cutting in Armstrong Court for this Saturday has been canceled, we'll get back to you with a future date. The Pembroke Town Party is 5:00, I think 5:00 this weekend, this Saturday. We had Parsonage Cottage's 25th Anniversary Lobster Event yesterday, which was well-attended. We had an Eagle Scout Ceremony last night, we had six new Eagle Scouts, which was a lot of fun. Tonight, Senator Fazio and I are doing a guest bartending stint over at the Lion in Glenville, so if anybody wants to come over and have a drink, the proceeds, some of the proceeds will go to the effort in Ukraine. And we're going to be doing one on June 18th, right, Lauren, at the Cobber North, so hopefully my colleagues will be there. Money, proceeds there will go towards the reimagined Greenwich effort, where we're trying to beautify our central business district. Tonight's at 6:00, 6 to 8. The big DOT meeting for the noise mitigation, 95, meeting will take place with the DOT Commissioner and others on Friday, 17th of June, and then later that day, I will be meeting with CT169 Strong about the affordable housing issue in 8-30G and all the applications, and how we could best protect the town. That's on the same day. This Saturday is a waterfall cleanup at Greenwich High School at 11.
No, next Saturday.
Next Saturday.
The 18th.
The 18th, thank you. And then there's something, then the Ukraine Packathon is also that, almost at the same time, at St. Catherine's Church, and then later that day at 12:00, we're having a boys' club reunion, and I guess now they're, it's a boys' and girls' club reunion, it's going way back, so that'll be fun at the main clubhouse. And I think that's it for me, so Lauren, you're up next.
Thanks, Fred, good morning, everyone. I'm actually in California, that's why my hair's still wet, attending a cyber, cybersecurity conference, learning how to protect things, especially municipalities and state and local and education entities. So my big announcement is, we start, assuming the weather's going to be nice, I'm flying home tomorrow, we start Free Music Fridays, Mark Zalenz is playing at noon, and then next Friday, the 17th, is our first evening event, which will be from 5 to 7, and Frank Rogers is going to be playing that evening. And as Fred mentioned, we are doing a guest bartending, and that actually is going towards Greenwich Forward, that's the 501(c)(3) entity that can accept donations to help fund the ideas that the Reimagine Committee has. And we have sponsors this year for Free Music Friday, and the money's going to go towards things like skimming, putting more visually appealing skins on the Jersey barriers, protecting the restaurant node, diners. And that's my update.
Thanks, Lauren, and good morning, Janet.
Good morning, thank you, Fred. So the month of May finished as busily as it began, and I was happy to fill in for Lauren at the latest Western Council of Governments meeting on May 31st. Of note was a discussion regarding the affordable housing plans that were due from all Connecticut municipalities on June 1st. Greenwich has filed for an extension, and I think it's worth noting that the reason is to accommodate our town process and allow for the RTM to vote on it at its June meeting. As our audience is aware, the May RTM meeting is given over exclusively to the vote on the town budget. From the attendees at the WestCog meeting, there were many words of admiration for our planning and zoning on the approach and process it has adopted. And then this Sunday at noon, there will be a pride proclamation and flag raising at Town Hall. I'm looking forward to attending, and I'm told that there will be ice cream and a live music performance. And then, as Fred mentioned, the following Saturday morning, June 18th, the waterfall project will kick off on the corner of the Post Road and Hillside Road in front of Greenwich High School. And this cleanup is being sponsored by a number of community partners, so thank you to all. Also, next Saturday, or that Saturday, June 18th, from 11 to 3, an Electrify Your Life Expo will take place at the Koskob train station. Please come by and check out electric cars, bikes, and landscaping equipment. There will be food trucks, music, and entertainment guaranteed to delight electric enthusiasts of all ages. And then I often end my updates by looking ahead, and in this case, I'm going to look way ahead to May 2023. This last month, the McWiggin household decided to participate in No-Mow May, which is exactly what it sounds like. We didn't mow our lawn for the month of May in order to support pollinator and insect life. I think this might be something our town could participate in. Be on the lookout for a more formal proposal from me in the near future. I think it's safe to say that I would like to see a little money in next year's budget for some lawn signs, so that neighbors don't think that those of us participating are simply neglecting our lawns. And then, last but not least, happy birthday, Barbara, and thank you for all you do.
Yes, happy birthday, Barbara. Everybody, I think the whole office had a birthday within like three weeks. I think you're the last one, you're about to clean up, so happy birthday and many, many more. Thanks for all you do for our town. Okay, we only have one item under Old Business, and that's the lease renewal for Ableist at 101 Orchard Street. Good morning, Valerie.
Good morning, First Selectman Camillo and members of the board. Good morning, First Selectman Camillo and members of the board, good to see you this morning. This is the second time that this item has been on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen. The town and Ableist, Inc. have been partners since 2002, and this wonderful lease for the public good of the Contemporary House on the Pomerance property in Koskob. Before we get to the issue of the new lease, I'd like to update the board briefly on the situation under the current lease. It's been a wonderful relationship since 2002, as I said. The only issue that has come up has to do with the access gate, which I described last time. Originally, in 2002, there was a chain link fence, which was designed to prevent traffic from going into the Pomerance property. It's designed for pedestrian hiking, that kind of thing, there are no finished roads there. But obviously, for reasons of convenience, for ingress and egress, Ableist requested that an electronic access gate be installed, which it was in 2002, and under the current lease, there's an obligation to maintain that access gate. It's now in disrepair, for one reason or another, Ableist has requested that that electronic access gate not be replaced. The Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Sisliano, is willing to install a manual gate there, and then see how it goes. And as we go forward, I'll be reporting back to the board about how that is working out. Obviously, it's a concern about it not being left open from the town's perspective, so that's what we will do. Ableist also has a couple of requested modifications on the lease that's part of your packet. One was that to, we have various provisions in the new lease to address the issue with the access gate, various options that the town can undertake, that an Ableist can undertake. Ableist can install an electronic access gate, the town can have a manual gate, if that doesn't work out, the town can install an electronic access gate and bill Ableist. So a couple of, there's also an administrative fee, we propose $50 if it's left open each time, Ableist says $25, and that's a modification that we're willing to make, and we would recommend. So that's the situation, and those modifications will come back to the board after MI approval is undertaken by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So those are the only real changes to the current lease that you have in your packet, and so we would ask the board if the board to vote on whether it supports the lease, and if so, then to vote to submit the application for MI approval. And once that is undertaken, as I said, it'll come back to the board and then be referred to the RTM.
Thank you, Valerie. Yeah, we waited, this is the second read, and I know the modifications, if the town's good with that, I'm certainly good with it, and I'd be willing to vote if we have a motion on the floor.
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, going on to New Business, we have two items, and the first is the amendment to the traffic ordinance, the no parking zone on Purna Lane, and we have Deputy Chief Craig Gray here, and Senior Civil Engineer Gabrielle Sarko, is Gabrielle here?
No.
She's actually not.
Oh, so you're solo.
I have backup, it's Jim Michael right behind me.
Okay. All right, you're chief.
I'll just introduce myself to everybody in the room if they don't know. I am Deputy Chief Craig Gray of the Greenwich Police Department, and I am also the Parking Services Director. So before you is a proposed amendment to the traffic ordinance amendment that allows for modifying the parking regulations at Purna Lane. Over the years, the Police Department and Parking Services has received numerous complaints regarding vehicle safety on Purna Lane. The complaints were regarding speeding vehicles and a line-of-sight issue on the southern portion of Purna Lane, and particularly in the area of that 90-degree turn. So Parking Services coordinated with the Department of Public Works for a traffic study, and the proposed modifications before you are a result of that traffic study. We did provide ample notice to the area residents of the proposed changes, and have received several comments. I believe we have several members of the Purna Lane community here also that are going to present theirs. And, you know, barring any direct questions, I think everything before you kind of speaks for the proposal. It was done at the resident's request, it was evaluated for safety, and the proposal changes are all based upon best standards, and I believe it's the town's practice book for engineering.
Excuse me?
Okay, okay, thank you, chief, appreciate that. Before I make any comments, I think I'll just let, go right to the public first, and then we'll.
Very well, I'll be right here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask that, so people who want to come up, just identify yourself for the record, and then state your name.
When I get down?
Yeah.
Okay, Marcela Bravo, please.
Yeah, just go up there. Thank you, Marcela.
Welcome. Marcela Bravo, 18 Purna Lane, M-A-R-C-E-L-A-B-R-A-V-O.
Thank you.
In September 15, 2015, the Eastern Greenwich Neighborhood Plan was adopted, was prepared by BFJ Planning for the town of Greenwich, I believe it was a very expensive work. On page 50, Figure 7, there is a functional roadway classification map, where you have major arterial roads like West Panham, collector roads like Sound Beach Avenue North and Sheep Hill Road, and local roads. These two collectors, Sound Beach Avenue and Sheep Hill Road, should be used for traffic coming from North Greenwich and Stamford. These are the two roads. And they take a shortcut to try to get to Exit 5 and come on Riverside Commons. The town should enforce the use of these two roads, Sound Beach Avenue Extension and Sheep Hill, for transit, instead of punishing us with no parking, and by coming here, sorry, can you hear me? By coming through these two roads, you, in a way, solve some of the problem in Exit 5 with so much traffic. The DPW Engineering Division Project does not take into account anything about the residents, doesn't talk about residents at all. And, yes. And regarding safety, the last traffic ordinance was adopted in 1953, and since then, we don't have any accidents, even if one person complains about it, one person complains about it all the time. So Deputy Chief of Police McCray should have no concerns, as there is no safety concerns. In 2020, we had signs put in place on the roads that later were taken out. For some reason, and 2022, two years later, this is coming back again and again, and I like to know who is pushing for this agenda again. There is something, that is what I'm asking, who is pushing for that agenda? And I am talking about code of ethics on the town of Greenwich, this is something we should take into account, because this is fishy.
Okay, thank you. Are you?
Continue, continue.
Excuse, hold on, hold on.
That's mainly what I have to say, and my daughter's going to continue.
Marcela, do you want to turn that around for them, so they can see, we're pretty, yeah, so just so they can see it, because we're pretty familiar with the roads there. Thank you so much.
So this is just for the audience. For everyone to see here, and what she was saying is basically that the town, you know, contracted BFJ Planning to do something very expensive to find a way to alleviate the congestion problems we have here on Exit 5. So in doing so, there's always congestion here. If you've gone through McDonald's and everything, you've seen that there's so much congestion there, and going through Neil Lane, it's a problem for the residents there, you always have parking and congestion, and it's a mess. And so the planning says, even Greenwich says itself, in order to alleviate this here, rather than taking roads like Neil Lane, Westcott, and Purna Lane to cut through backcountry and upwards, why don't we take Sheep Hill Road and Sound Beach Avenue, which are larger roads with no parking, rather than having them cut through Purna Lane, which is a local not-through street? And I don't know why there's no signs that say not, that it's a local street, and it should be a local street, and that's in the Greenwich Code right there, it's written in there, you can find it online, and it'll say it's not a through street, so cars should not be using it to cut through if you're not local. So in order, you know, this is basically saying, use Sheep Hill, use Sound Beach that has, you know, better sight-of-distance measurements, and it's a straighter road, and you alleviate the problem with Purna Lane, like stop targeting Purna Lane when you have these larger arterial roads here, Sheep Hill Road and Sound Beach, to alleviate this problem here too. So getting back to it, it's why Purna Lane is such a small street, so why are we spending so much time and resources and our taxpayer money to try to alleviate the problem here, not Purna? So that's what my mother, Marcela, who's been a resident since 1980 on Purna Lane, has had to say, and we all know very well what's, you know, the problem that we've had here. So I think maybe they can see it there and everything.
And I think this is something that should be done with every part of the town. All these local roads should be allowed to have parking on the street, everyone, except for these special roads with traffic.
Well, thank you very much for doing that, appreciate it.
Excuse me, ma'am, would you please scoot your name to the record? Mine or hers?
You, yours.
Do you want me to go up and state it?
Yes, that would be great.
Do you mind if I go up and present next?
Thank you. And I'm going to ask people, if you've already heard your point, please try not to do it, because we're really under a tight schedule, we understand the points are being made here, so if you've heard your point already, I'd ask you please not to just go on to something else, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
So my name is Marilyn Corzo, and that's spelled M-A-R-I-L-Y-N, Corzo, that's C-O-R-Z-O. And I live over on 18 Purna Lane, so where like the majority of this ordinance is affected on the curve there. So, you know, I've lived there for 30 years, you know, I'm proud to say I'm a proud resident of Purna Lane, I've lived there for 30 years, I've known my neighbors my entire life, and, you know, neighbors that have been there since the inception of the road in the 1950s. And I personally have never seen a car accident near miss or an issue caused by street parking. You know, my parents and lifelong members of, neighbors of the street have been here, and I've interviewed them, and they don't ever recall an accident happening or anything like that. And, you know, the amendment here that was adopted on April 28th, 1953, it has not since ever been amended. So that speaks volumes, you know, there's not been an issue, so why, you know, why are we bringing this up again? So let me preclude by saying that I don't think parking, and a lot of us think parking is not the issue, it's the speed and the manner in which our road is being used as a cut-through access, it's basically using it as a raceway. And this is going back to what my mother was saying, is use Sheep Hill and use Sound Beach Avenue Extension rather than Purna Lane, you know, and this parking issue was brought up in 2020 by a resident at 20 Purna Lane, and he keeps bringing it up, and so the town report was written in 2020, so why is it now being brought up two years later, is what I want to know? The town report states that line of vision is obstructed in front of 18 Purna Lane, which is in the southbound area in the curve, and they're saying that the parked cars are causing passerby drivers to cross the double yellow line. Now, I have sat in my parked car and watched hundreds of cars pass by and taken photos, and can prove that there's ample room for parked cars and passerby vehicles to pass by without having to cross the double yellow line. If the drivers cross the double yellow line, that's their conscious choice to do that, that's not based on my parked car. And to add to that, our cars are mostly parked at nighttime, after work, they're not really there during the day. So I'm going to move over to my figures here. So this over here, this is 18 Purna Lane, and that's my vehicle parked there, and you can see there's room. I took a photo here of my parked car, another parked car right there on 18 Purna Lane, and you can see that the car that's passing by has room and is not crossing the double yellow line. We can also see here, you can see the hood of my Jeep parked there, and this car also was able to pass by with no issues, did not cross the double yellow line, as you can see here moments later, passed by and did the entire curve, and I have a video of that too, if you want. So again, you know, going back, other streets like Westcott also have the same issue, they have double parked cars and sight-of-line distance measurements that don't go with the Greenwich's regulations, so there's other streets that are, you know, basically have the same problem as Purna, so, you know, why us? For instance, here's Westcott Street over here, there's another curve and a parked car there, same issue that Purna Lane has. So if you want, I could turn this over to the audience.
Yeah, thanks, Marilyn.
That way they could see it.
Appreciate it, thank you, Marilyn.
So this is what I was showing the board over there, is that here is 18 Purna Lane, this is Purna Lane heading southbound, and here's the curve. My parked car's there, I was sitting in my truck when a car passed by, did not cross the double yellow line. Here's a Mercedes is also crossing with the hood of my car parked there, you can see seconds later, he makes the turn, does not cross the double yellow line. This is showing Westcott Street also having the same issue as Purna Lane issue of street parking on double sides, and this is Westcott Street over up towards more McDonald's, there's a curve there, and a parked car there, so it's not just Purna that has this issue. There's curves everywhere, it's just the way that the, you know, yeah, towns aside, physics So why is street parking so important? You know, we've had it our entire lives, parked cars act as friction points and buffers that slow speeding drivers who use our street as a racetrack to cut through to get to I-95 or backcountry. Some of my neighbors on my side of the street, they're elderly, and so they can't access the house from their steep driveways, because most of the driveways on our side of the street are very, very steep, so it's easier for the elderly residents to park on the street and take their stairs that are level, it's a safer way to get up to their front house. So that's also a good point of having street parking. Another thing is that we have steep driveways, so that's why we park some of our cars on the street, most driveways are, you know, one-car-wide, one-car garage, that's how they were designed in the 50s. And for people to park multiple cars in the driveway, and to have to back out to let cars out in and out, that can cause an issue, that can cause an accident in itself, so it's just so much cleaner, just park on the street. And the other thing is, you know, where are we supposed to park when we have gatherings, when it's Christmas and everything, are we going to go over to Westcott and take their parking, and so on and so forth, and, you know, Westcott, Hoover, they all have the same issues that Purna Lane has, so, you know, every street is going to have to be audited, basically, and have a report written if this is the case, if this is what the town and Department of Public Works and the police truly believe. And so, you know, some solutions we can have are putting, you know, not a through-street sign or locals-only, even, you know, as drastic as making it a dead end as it was in the 1960s, speed bumps, or putting up those little white fences and stuff that have to have drivers slow down and maneuver around, because we do have upwards of 25 kids on the street, so if we take away the parked cars that are buffers, people are going to zoom on by, and we have kids playing on the street all the time. So this is just another, so this is basically showing, I pulled up a USGS map from 1960 showing Purna Lane being a dead end, so that could be, you know, if we really push for it, have it, you know, in order to stop this issue, is make it a dead end again. This is here showing the Exit 5 issue, again, sending cars rather than sending them through Neil, Westcott, and Purna Lane, sending them, having them go through Sheep Hill and Sound Beach Avenue rather than having them cut through, through there. So, you know, this is my call to action, basically is, so who will the town target next? Almost every surrounding road has a street, has street parking, such as Purna Lane, all streets and curves, all streets then need to be reevaluated, and should this Purna Lane ordinance pass, how much more of our time and tax money will be needlessly spent to, you know, to audit these streets, and they're such small streets, we're just hardworking people, we just want to park cars on the street, we don't want to bother nobody, you know, we just want safer roads. So our taxes can be allocated to greater traffic problems, you know, that the Riverside Association pushes for, such as Exit 5, and so on and so forth, and this is again, these are the streets that could be potentially targeted in Riverside, over in Havemeyer, over here Amherst, all of that, you know, if this passes, then those streets, again, should be audited and have a report written if this is what the DPW Parking Services and the police truly believes. Now, I have one more thing to say, is Frank Curban could not make it today, he was very adamant about.
He called me.
Yeah, about coming here, and he opposes it very strongly, the entire curve. Yeah, about coming here and he opposes it very strongly, the entire Curvan family. And, but a work obligation came up and he had some good points. And so if the true intent, this is, these are Frank's words, Frank Curvan, "If the true intent of the letter is safety concerns, eliminating parking will increase both speed and traffic volume, making the road less safe." Again, we have 25, over 25 kids on our street playing.
And old people.
Yeah, and elderly people who walk by and everything. And so if the town wants to stick to its roadway design manual, Westcott Court is supposed to be a dead end, which would eliminate all the cut-through traffic, again, that's going back to a solution that we could have. You know, Purna Lane is at least 70 years old and these issues have never been addressed. You know, if the town wants to address issues that have existed for 70 years or more, such as Purna and Westcott Court not, you know, being a dead end, that should be done, you know, everywhere in town, as I said, like these next streets over on, over by Havemeyer and Riverside could be targeted next.
One second, please.
Yes.
I know, we have hands raised. This is very thorough Marilyn, and I appreciate that. And I know a lot of these thoughts have been passed on to me by lots of people over there.
Yes.
I am very familiar with Purna Lane, having spent a lot of my life over there. You know, I know some people want to talk here, but I think we're going to start saying the same things over and over again. I have serious concerns about this. If you, this could set a precedent.
Yeah.
And every road, including my own, we would probably have an issue where people can have any bit of your house. And I think that would be a little bit of a discriminatory policy to have, you know, neighborhoods that don't have a lot of land for all-street parking. Also, Frank Curvan's point about the cars being, you did your homework there and those pictures clearly show that cars can pass pretty easily there with on the side of the road. And if you take the cars off the side of the road, as we know, and DPW's been great about this, the wider the roads, the more they'll speed. So I think having the cars there actually may help a little bit. That's just my opinion. I know we'll probably have a second read on this in two weeks, but that's, I'm pretty concerned about this. So I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I know that, you know, you've done your homework here and I, again, this could set a precedent where you would have, it wouldn't stop on Purna Lane. It would start to be all over the place. So I think we have to be very, very careful of that. And the person who has raised these issues over the past few years, I think you're right. We could visit some other things and, you know, see if we can slow traffic down a little bit in other ways without taking away the right to park off, you know, on the road there. So I thank you for your very, very, very thorough presentation on that.
Thank you Fred Camillo. And just one more thing is that the Federal Highway Administration, the DOT states here, I got it right from their website, and this is what the town uses as its recommendations, says that having parked cars aids in speed reductions by increasing friction along the street. So, you know, what the DPW and the engineers, where they get their recommendations for, you know, the street recommendations and everything, they get it from the Federal Highway Administration. And they themselves are saying that having cars on the street, you know, are buffers that slow speeding cars, which is the main issue on Purna Lane. So again, I want to thank you for taking the time. You know, we did our homework and everything and then, you know, I'll leave it open for whoever else wants to speak or whoever has questions.
Yes ma'am. Do you want to come up here, please? And then we also, and then to be followed by Bob Mazza, who has his hand raised online. Correct. Okay, yes ma'am.
Very nice.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And again, thank you so much. And again, if it's something new, great, because we kind of know where we're, what we're dealing with. Okay.
Is that enough space?
Okay.
Right here. Oh, it's already on. All right.
Oh. Okay.
Right Nancy, right back.
So right here?
Yes, thanks. Just identify it. Thank you.
Hi. So my name is Nancy Fanton, and I reside at 10 Purna Lane, which is the last driveway before the corner of Westcott. So I can't speak for anybody around the bend. I haven't driven in years, but I do know on the other end, I sometimes walk it, that on the other end, they have kind of parking spaces carved out, so it kind of makes it feasible on the other end. And I understand their need for parking on the other end of the bend. I'm on the other end of the bend, towards Westcott, and there are six properties on that end of the street. We have plenty of parking. We have big driveways. We, there's no need. There's never been a need for any kind of parking on my end. So I'm pretty much speaking for the safety of myself. And also, I spoke with several residents on Westcott the other night who wanted to be here, also one that's away. He's on, he's the corner property at the stop sign, so he has a lawn. So what I read in the report is that parking would be allowed going forward from my driveway to the stop sign. And the couple who lives on the corner are not back yet from the winter and they are not going to want parking there, on their lawn, or on the street. Nobody does on Westcott. I spoke to several of the neighbors there. They were telling me how that stop sign is not acknowledged. There are lifelong residents there. They said for decades, it's just not been acknowledged. Most drivers just kind of go right through it. And they're saying if you do allow parking from my driveway to the stop sign, it's just going to be more of a distraction. To have cars that are actually going to be parked on the roadway, because there are no cutouts for parking spaces, they're going to be actually blocking that lane. It's going to be another distraction from the stop sign, which is already not acknowledged. So that, those were the concerns of those who live on Westcott and the one person, the couple on the corner that's not back in town yet. As far as my concern, I come and go from my house, walking day and night. So I walk from that stop sign on that side of the street to my driveway. For me, I am, I have some sight during the day, but at night I am completely blind. So for years, I've been using my stick to hug that lawn, and I can't go on the lawn with my cart. So I'm actually on the roadway, trying to find my way to my driveway, which quite often I kind of miss and go in other people's driveways or, so I'm accustomed to using that stretch. And if you allow parking, which really isn't necessary from my driveway to the corner, because we all have ample parking, I can understand for a holiday, sure, you know, people are going to throw cars on the street, but on a daily basis, it really isn't necessary. So if you allow cars there, I do know there's going to be one aforementioned neighbor who instead of putting cars in their driveway are just going to end up putting a lot of vehicles there, which aren't really necessary, since they have plenty of room in their driveway to put all their vehicles. So it's going to create a huge issue where instead of me hugging the lawn, the curb for me to get to my driveway, now I'm going to have these obstacles of a bunch of cars that could be in driveways. One particular driveway, these cars are going to be on the road, blocking that lane. So now I'm going to have to bump, ball be like hitting these cars, then I'll have to walk around them, and I'll be very close to the yellow line. So then people coming towards me who whip around the bend, they are going to have to go around me going around those vehicles. So they're going to have to cross that double line, double yellow line completely. Or even if I'm not there, when they're coming around the bend, they are going to have to go around those vehicles and cross the yellow W line to some extent, and then when I'm there, they're going to have to cross all the way over. And just so you know, like, Westcott and the other round the bend, as far as I know, around the bend is lit better, just like Westcott is. Over there, people ripping, coming around that bend or coming around the corner from Westcott, because, you know, you got the bend there and the bend from coming from Westcott. So I'm going to be like in the middle of the road, basically.
Okay. I appreciate Nancy.
So that's, for me, it's a safety concern. And then also, like I said, for those on Westcott, they said it's a safety concern if you have a bunch of cars there, distracting from the stop sign, which is already not acknowledged, so.
Thank you Nancy.
That's it.
Thank you Nancy. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's Bob Mazza and then, okay. Can we, Bob had his hand, and then you're next. You're on deck. Thanks. Sure. Did he, is he still there?
He's done come on us.
Okay.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Bob. Good morning.
Yes, thank you for hearing me select me Camillo. Really appreciate you taking the time. Apologies for not being able to be there in person, a little under the weather. Look, a lot of my points were brought up. Definitely want to thank the Corzo family and Nancy who just came up, and I know Audra will have some great points as well. So I want to make this short and sweet. Of course, we have a tremendous amount of children here. I'm a lifelong Greenwich resident and have chosen to raise my children here in town and love it. And certainly as, you know, you have children, safety becomes of the utmost concern. We've heard a lot of things today, and I think we all recognize that this proposed solution is not it, but I also think that leaving things as is is not the solution as well. We're one of the few streets in the area that do not have sidewalks. We have children, 25-plus children on the street that do not provide busing to every school that they're at. There's a lot of issues here. The road used to be a dead end. I don't know why that had changed. There's a lot of possible solutions. I don't want to claim to know what is best, but I appreciate you hearing us and understanding that there's something that needs to be changed here for the safety of our children, for the safety of all of us in this area. And I thank you for hearing us.
Thank you, Bob. Feel better.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Audra Donovan. Thank you, Bob. So I think just it's important, I really appreciate it you did. I'm the second generation who are coming in, so I have three small children. So I can tell you that we lose balls because the cars come and run them over. We found dead rabbits on our street, and it is exactly what you're saying. The proof is here. They're saying it's a residential street faster than appropriate for a residential local roadway. It goes on to say that the cars parked on the street are slowing the traffic down. The majority of the speed that they're in here, which, you know, they didn't send to us, but, you know, we got, all the speed is mostly at the speed limit of 25 miles an hour and some, I think there was one that was 40 miles an hour while our children are on the street. So the, there is a problem. It's not parking. The parking is helping us. We have to park our cars there. Also, we're residents. We have one-car garages. So you take away our parking, where are we going to park? I don't think there's anyone on our street that has a two-car, actually, no, Paul, you just fixed your house. So now he has a two-car garage. But we don't have any way to, where to park our cars. When my children were playing, I'd have to park cars in front of my house so they wouldn't go on the street because they go too fast. So speed is the issue here. We need to fix that. And they cut through, it says it here, it's a cut-through. Five years ago, Riverside Commons has changed. It used to be a Chinese restaurant. It used to, people used to stay there, they'd go to the Italian restaurant. Now we have Jersey Mike's, we have Chipotle, we have Starbucks. Nobody's stopping at those stop signs. They're running into Riverside Commons and running back. That has completely changed our road. They're speeding to get there. My husband leaves for work at 6:00 in the morning, he says none of the stop signs. Nobody obeys any of the stop signs. They're running and he sees them. They run to get their coffee. We don't have school buses for any of our children. We have up to 25 children. There's only, there's, I don't know, there's 30 houses? We're not a big block with 25 children. They're in the street. They can't play in the street at present. So we all agree, and for all different reasons, we agree there's a problem. The complaint for parking is one person. Only one person is calling to say parking is an issue. The complaint for speed is every single resident on that street. So we do ask for your help. We do ask for your help to please help us with the speed. It was a dead end. And it, maybe it should be a dead end. We have Westcott, we have Hoover, that those come, are two-way streets and come both ways. Purna is a turn. So, you know, Paul lives on the corner, he lost mailboxes. Because there's nothing stopping that turn from Sheep Hill, this speed, and that's where the majority of the houses are, on the other side of the street, where we're all conglomerate together, where we have no parking. And they're coming down Sheep Hill speeding, and there's no defined turn there. So they're on, they go on his, they go on his road, they go on his grass, they have knocked down his mailbox several times. He has three children like myself, they can't even go in front of their house at present. So yes, there's a problem. Everybody on Purna agrees, speed is the problem. And this supports it. The report supports it. The report does not support parking, because all that's hurting is the residents and all, it will be a speedway. Because you're giving them clear access to speed wherever they want if there's only one, if there's no cars parked in their way. So there's 660 cars that have came through this little road. And again, thank you for hearing us. We're really supportive of Purna Lane. You know, we don't have accidents there, but we do, we need safety for our children and the residents.
Well, thank you very much. I know we should probably look in, chief, maybe right across from them is Lancer Road, and that becomes a dead end there. And I don't know if we have a speeding issue there, but maybe that could be something to look into, maybe that could solve this in the future, but anyway, Paul, go ahead.
I'm going to be, try to be incredibly brief, and everyone else has done such a fabulous job of preparing remarks, and I really appreciate everybody who's spoken. I just want to, I do want to make my remarks heard as well, and I will try not to repeat anything, because everything's been said so well. I do want to note one thing about what Nancy said. I do believe, obviously, it's very important that she's kept safe. I don't think this is about just that area from her, from those driveways at the end of the turn of the stop sign. I think this is more about the parking at the rest of the area. In fact, I actually know people over on Westcott, a number of people on Westcott with small kids. If we start to add in the kids in their neighborhood, we're up to about 40 kids, actually. And the people on Westcott do have the same problem with the speeding cars that Audra has mentioned and that Bob has mentioned as well. Again, I know this is, this is a slight bit of a repeat, but I will say this. I can't talk anymore about all the kids. I can't talk about anymore about the elderly people that we have on our street, because it's been all so well said. I do want to talk about my mailbox.
Was it me?
No, no, no. But, you know, I actually called the police one day, and we had, I had an officer come out and I said, the guy came up, I said, "I can't believe that, you know, on the one hand, my mailbox is hanging off, so I'm angry." But I was also kind of excited. I said, "Do people really do mailbox baseball anymore? I can't believe they're still doing mailbox baseball like the old 1950s movies." And the guy goes, and our excellent police officer looked around, he said, did a little investigation, said, "This wasn't, this wasn't mailbox baseball. Here's half a rearview mirror. Somebody whipped around our corner in the middle of the night so fast that their rearview mirror smacked off my mailbox." And they do that while kids are out there at play. They do that while kids are out there at play. 25 kids on our street and moreover on Westcott, trying to play out in the street, trying to walk to school, trying to get down to, to get up the street, to get a bus to the high school. It's dangerous. We have a retired police officer who walks, who lives across the street over on Lancer, and I talk to him frequently. He walks his dog. He's said to me, "I don't know what to do about this, but this is a dangerous street." "It's dangerous, why is this a dangerous street?"
You're talking about Purna?
Yes, we're talking about Purna. He comes over and walks the dog there, but he actually walks like he should, walking into traffic, because he's terrified of people coming around behind him. People on our street shouldn't be terrified to walk down their street. And so I will say this, I'll admit it, when my mailbox got hit, that was the day I started parking the street. I started parking the street because I'm on the corner. And if I put a van there, if you hit my van, fine. I'd rather you hit my van than hit one of the kids, the street. So this is, as Audra said, this is not a parking problem. This is a speed problem on a street that has a yellow line that ends just beyond my house and before Audra's house. So it becomes a, it's not a two-lane road, you know, it's not a two-lane road. So it becomes a, it's not a two lane road, you know, it's not a two lane road 50 feet, 100 feet into the street. So I just wanted to say that and thank you very much for hearing us out.
Thank you.
I, I apologize. Paul, P-A-U-L. And the last name's Fix, F-I-X. And I live at 36 Perna Lane, Riverside, Connecticut. You know, you know the rest. Thank you.
Good morning. Real quick, Jack Campisi, 16, Perna Lane, C-A-M-P-I-S-I. My family's been on Perna Lane over 55 years. We are the ones right on the corner, ground zero. My father carved out a parking space. So we are an extra two feet off. So when you go from the, the, the street line to our wall, it's a good 10 feet to eight feet. So we can comfortably park a car without it sticking out whatsoever. So Maryland has great screenshots and everything, but I'm telling you, our house right on the corner is absolutely off the road. So I wanted to make sure that that is a known fact. And I have senior citizen parents, I represent, and their friends. We are on also maybe the steepest part because our driveway goes right into the hill, so that, we really need that.
I think it is the steepest.
It is. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Jack. I appreciate that. I think, I think this is the, our last speaker on this and okay. We have two more and then we're going to get to DPW and the next item. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Kathleen with a K, Willsey, W-I-L-L-F-E-Y. Also lifelong resident. We were one of the very first houses, 11 Perna Lane. It was a dirt road and dead end when we moved there. And my mother is 98 years old and still lives there. We need the parking. We also carved out spaces in front of our house. She has caregivers sometimes that come in and we need the parking in front of our house. We can't have her try to walk down to the park, to our driveway, which isn't be in the back of our house. So we are right on the curve as well. We're right across the street from the Campisis. And I just wanted to, again, reiterate, I have not seen an accident since I've lived there. And I've lived there 70 years.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
My name is Jenna, J-E-N-A-Z-U-L-A-Z-A-C-U-L-A. I live at 15 Perna, so we're neighbors and we're neighbors across the street. So we're the first house after the curb. We have eight children. There is zero sidewalks. All of my children walk to school. And they dodge in between the parked cars, they walk on people's lawns. It's kind of accepted because there's nowhere else for them to walk. One Saturday, my four year old was playing. He went out in the street. A car screeched and stopped and honked at him because he was in the street retrieving a ball. It's, it's really not safe. And my children walk up to the McDonald's, they walk up to the middle school, they walk everywhere because they children, I'm not driving them everywhere. There's no bus service. And when there was a bus service, that was interesting as well. So please make the street safer by slowing the cars down, turning it back into a dead end, or just getting rid of the motorist. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I really appreciate everybody who came and spoke and offered some evidence to support their, their case. We will just make a rule on this next, in two weeks. Chiefs, did you want to say?
No.
For the second read, but we've heard all the concerns and certainly there is an issue there and we'll have to come up with something that can slow the cars down. I know it's, when I grew up, there was a lot of kids on that road and we were out in the street there back in the 70s. And now it's great to see more kids there now and then the next generation. So I guess it's incumbent upon us to keep everybody safe. So I want to thank you all for coming here today. Thank you. Okay, the last item is MI. Presentation for the Greenwich Avenue Intersection Improvements, Arch and Havenmeyer and Fawcett and Grigg. And we have DPW, Deputy Commissioner Jim Michael and our Chief Engineer. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, thank you. We are really up against, we're supposed to be starting our special meeting at 11:20. So we'll try and go through this as quickly as we can and we may be a little bit late, but I'm sorry, we have to let people speak when they want to speak. So hopefully they'll be waiting for us on their special meeting. Jim, good morning.
All right, so that means I'll speak very quickly here. So.
I'm sorry.
As, as everybody's aware, Greenwich Avenue Intersection Improvements is a project that was very heavily debated in this past budget cycle. So there's been a lot of information out there. So I'm not going to reiterate all that information. What we're looking at doing is intersection improvements and this, we're requesting MI approval for the intersections of Arch Street, Havenmeyer, Fawcett and Grigg. So in the packet, it shows the renderings, which I've got on the screens in front of you. That's what we're looking to do. These improvements are to, we're, as part of these improvements, we're adding 12 parking spaces. These are safety improvements to address pedestrian safety. Both of these intersections have almost, in some cases, actually more pedestrians going through them than vehicles. So we're making additional pedestrian improvements because of that. On a Saturday midday, there can be up to 800 pedestrians going through these intersections. So by doing this, these improvements, we're better aligning the intersection at Arch and Havenmeyer. We're reducing the crossing distance that people have to cross and we're improving visibility. And one of the bigger things that we're trying to do here as well is improve the ADA accessibility throughout Greenwich Avenue. So we're going to be modifying some of the ADA accessible parking stalls, adding some improvements for that. And then we're also doing, you know, a little bit of a, I don't want to call it a complete facelift, but a little bit of a facelift with adding landscaping and some benches, et cetera. So that's, that's the overall gist of it. And like I said, we've been debating this for a few months now in the public. And so I think there's a pretty good understanding of what's going on here. So nothing's really changed since the RTM meeting a month ago, so.
Well, thank you, Jim. It certainly looks beautiful, much better than what's there now. And as we just heard from the last go around, that parking, people are speeding. And when you have cars on the road there, you, you, you know, shorten the distance, cars are not speeding as much. And so especially heard complaints with people, all the new residents we've had since the pandemic, which was over 1,000, I believe. Some were not familiar with our streets and even I remember witnessing two going up Greenwich Avenue at the beginning of the pandemic. But just for some points of clarification, because we heard from some people on the RTM that were not in favor of this, that it was, there's going to be about four or five of these things that I'm going to ask, that somehow we, truth wasn't being told and it's kind of taken away spaces and we're fooling around with the numbers and all that. Does this add parking spaces?
This adds 12 parking spaces.
It adds 12 parking spaces, just for the record. Is this fully paid for in a grant?
This project is fully paid for through a grant through, it's through a state program that's specific for transportation improvements. So if those funds are not used towards transportation improvements, they cannot be used towards other projects in town.
Thank you. Now, does, we heard from others that it was somehow going to touch the memorial and Colonel Bowling and then the Vietnam Memorial right in front of the Board of Ed building. Does this in any way affect those two areas?
No, it actually, it actually improves the one that's directly in front of the Board of Ed building because we're going to be placing the sidewalk slightly closer to that area and putting a pathway up to that memorial. The one that's directly right there is kind of a memorial standing in the middle of the grass area. And we're going to be doing a sidewalk connection in a little, like, I don't want to call it a patio, but kind of a little paver area right outside the memorial so that people can gather there and view the memorial even easier.
In the front of it?
Correct.
Okay, and then as far as the bowling statue?
Yeah, that's not being touched.
Okay. I, I knew that, but there were some people that keep saying it's being touched, so I wanted to, on the record for some people. Any questions, Lauren or Janet?
This is a slightly different topic. I just want to point out, and please don't read anything into my question, but in the rendering, we don't see the outdoor dining. So it's just, it's just something to, you know, when we're, when we're looking at the avenue, it's like, I think we need to kind of look comprehensively at everything that's going on. I'll just, I'm just going to put that out there.
Correct. And so, so some of the areas with the outdoor dining and one of the ways that we're looking at doing that, if you look at the rendering at Fawcett and Grigg, we're actually creating a area that's going to be kind of sidewalk area in front of the Melly Mello there by, you know, in the area where there may be currently parking, but it's been utilized for outdoor dining for the last three, some, three years. And that area will then be allowed for that. That helps with the traffic flow through there with parking cars coming out in the middle of an intersection. So and even by doing that, we're able to maintain the number of parking stalls and actually increase the number of parking stalls in the, for the plan, so.
And then just.
So I just had, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Janet.
I was just, I was just going to say, and I, I know that you're working on this and I know that things can be still tweaked, but I do know that our bike task force is, is, you know, focused on complete streets and can we accommodate bikers? And I, I thank you for helping the bike task force on that and I know we're working on it.
Yep, and we're adding some bike racks as part of this project to allow for people on cycling, on cycles to come to this area, so.
Yeah, that's a big hit with a lot of people in town. Thank you. You did say the ADA that we were possibly adding some?
We're either maintaining the same number or adding. I would have to go back and look exactly.
Nothing's taken away.
We're not taking any away.
Okay, thank you. Lauren?
Sure, so just wanted to add that the reimagine, the first Selectments Committee to reimagine Greenwich is also supportive. We talked about it at our meeting this past Monday. And Jim, I'm going to share with you some pictures I took, the streets in San Francisco, because I know some people talked about like the painted brickery, how that disintegrates over time. So another option for the, the brickery that indicates the crossing.
Yeah, I do, I do know that there is some concern that the crosswalks that are currently at Fawcett and Grigg have that brick look to them and they have deteriorated. We now use a different product because we have been monitoring that. And the product that we use is not just paint. The ones that are down at Fawcett and Grigg right now are literally just painted asphalt. And so they last about four or five years and then we have to repaint them. The new product is kind of like, is what, basically it's a thermoplastic product. It's a product that's about three quarters of an inch thick that they come in and put in and it's stays there and it's lasted very well over time.
Thank you. Well, you certainly have done a, a great job with this.
No, I was just going to ask, is that the same as the crosswalk in Old Greenwich? That, that brick finish?
The new ones that are in downtown Old Greenwich are the same product, yes.
Yeah, that's, they're fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim. I know I'm watching it. Any, anybody else who'd like to come up and speak? Please come up and identify yourself. Yes, ma'am. Yes. Jim, can you?
Thank you, Mr. Camillo. My name is Christina Volquin, District 2, RTM and private citizen for almost 30 years of Greenwich. I have a couple of questions. First of all, I'd like to know why the box on the application for the grant for $2.8 million indicating that this was not a historical area, that this project would not affect a historical area or monuments was checked, that it would not. Secondly, I'd like a clear answer, yes or no, whether parking will be taken away on the avenue between Arch Street and Grigg Street on the right hand side for a pickup and drop off area. My reading of the plans indicate that a huge number of spaces on the avenue is going to be taken away. And for you to keep insisting that you're adding parking, which is off the avenue on Arch Street, is disingenuous.
All right, please, please be civil.
I am being civil.
We don't want to repeat your, your performance on the RTM. So please be civil.
Good, well, they cannot elect me if they don't like me down the road. The other thing I'd like to ask, the Affordable Housing Plan had a diagram included that shows that the lawn slated to be taken away from the BOE building is in protected open space. I would like to be provided with the town's documents regarding protected open space and what it entails and how we as a town protect the protected open space. Is it town protected open space, state protected open space? And I would imagine maybe it cannot be touched for some projects such as this. I would conclude by saying, these bump outs are going to provide five points of crossing in this intersection instead of four, increasing, decreasing the safety of pedestrians crossing this intersection, not increasing it. And by the way, we don't even have a safety issue. This is number 68, I believe, on the list of unsafe streets in our town. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jim, would you like to respond to that? Thank you.
So, so this improvement is all being done within the town's right of way? So it's not impacting open space? In addition, the question on the grant application specifically asked, are we impacting historical areas? I believe is the way it was worded. The way it's worded, we're not doing anything that's going to change the historical nature of the area. So those are the key factors. When it comes to the, the drop off pickup area near Grigg Street, that was eliminated from the prior plans. That was a very early on plan and we have eliminated that from prior plans.
Thank you very much for answering those questions, Jim. Appreciate it. I'm going to go to the right first. Go ahead, David, go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay. Don, just, just set up here. Thank you.
David Wald, W-O-L-D. I will not in, go to the intersection and the traffic pattern here, but I would like to address the historical aspect of this and specifically what is related to the veterans' issues. As you remember, Fred, a year and a half ago on Christmas Eve, you invited us to come to your office and your initiative, you said that you wanted a veteran representative on anything related to veterans' memorials, maybe the 13 or so around town and any issues connected to that. This is being presented to the public as an intersection similar to what was done by Elm Street and Greenwich Avenue. Any impact there has about 50 feet, I think, in all directions from the intersection, nothing more than that. I look at these two pictures, which has been portrayed in newspapers, articles, facts from the DPW in their co-op in the newspapers, and I still can't see the veterans' memorials on Arch Street and Greenwich Avenue. So Jimmy, could you point out where they are? One, two, three. Okay, for the record, he pointed out three memorials in that intersection that would be affected or disrupted by this work. There was also mentioned here, the right of way. And I would like to point out that planning and zoning and municipal improvement from 1960, I believe it is. and zoning and municipal improvement from nineteen sixty, I believe it is, is on the potential of widening Arch Street, not moving Arch Street. So, as far as I can see, it's two lanes on Arch Street still, and the only thing that DPW has proposed is to move it twenty-five to thirty-five feet in the last block before you enter Greenwich Avenue, and then giving Restoration Hardware the twelve parking spaces. As you know, in two thousand and seventeen, we discovered, the Veterans Council in Greenwich, that the Civil War memorial was reduced to almost meaning nothing. The growing tree that was planted by the Civil War veterans in nineteen fourteen and dedicated, and given to the Board of Ed as an instrument to educate the children after the veterans had disappeared, in a growing monument of a tree, had been cut down and no intention of replacing it. We approached then the Board of Selectmen and asked if we could rededicate a tree and carry on the traditions and the historic element of the Civil War. That was enthusiastically taken by the Board of Ed, and the nursery that supplies to the town donated a tree, and I think some of them attended the ceremony, where we repeated the process that was done in nineteen fourteen by the remaining, the surviving Civil War veterans in Greenwich. In connection with that, we handed a letter to the Board of Selectmen from the legal ancestors of, or the ones who took over when the last Grand Army of the Republic Civil War veteran died, and where they expressed their appreciation for carrying on this tradition, and Board of Ed received that, Board of Selectmen, I have a copy of it here, and we thought that that was a dedicated, protected space in town. In connection with the Memorial Garden Grove at the Byram School, Joseph Leano brought up something that was totally unknown to most people who deal with history in this town. The Memorial Grove there was not protected, it was dedicated but not protected. So, in part of his house cleaning, cleanup after Frank Keegan, he went through the process, first the Board of Parks and Rec, then in front of the Board of Selectmen, and got a very small part of Eugene Morlow Memorial Park dedicated forever as a memorial for World War II Korea and Vietnam veterans who attended the school and died. I was surprised by this action, but I, I was very happy that it passed, and that area is protected. This was in November, six months ago. I approached Joseph Leano in eighth of February, which happens to be the same day as this application went in front to get the grant from the state of Connecticut. And I said to Joseph Leano, what about the rest of the war memorials that we have in town? Are they protected forever, or do we have to go through the same process? I have reminded him six times to give me an answer on specifically these memorials on Greenwich Avenue and Arch Street. He has not responded to one single request. But please note again, this application, signed, sealed, and delivered by the town of Greenwich, where they cross off the box where it says, "has no effect on historical monument or parks or anything." This is clearly a historical district in Greenwich. It has plaques, it has signs, it has been dedicated as historical district. And now, when we see that the DPW is introducing drawings that has no reference, you can barely see where these historical monuments are, but they are reconstructing the triangle which has been referred to as the plaza, where the World War I monument is, and was specifically dedicated, and if you go and look at the text on the monument, you will see it's clearly dedicated with reference to the sign that faces the Board of Ed and the Civil War monument. It's all constructed back in the nineteen ten, nineteen twenties as a memorial for education of the citizens of Greenwich of what those people did during the Civil War, the same way as Bowling, who died in World War I, as the first officer of, of the American Army. So, when I see these drawings, and by just pure luck, because it's always been referred to as an intersection, 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 that this would affect the bowling statue, I approached the family of the bowling, they were totally unaware of what was planning. I approached the Civil War organization, they were totally unaware of it, and I have a letter from them that I received, where they strongly emphasize that they would like to be included in any thing that happens in front of that monument. I approached the World War I Commission down in Washington about the change of the triangle and the monument in front of the post office or Restoration Hardware. They are going to keep an eye on this. So this is getting national attention now, purely because the town was, has not been willing to recognize the veterans' memorial. And when I, on Memorial Day, pointed out to you, Fred, that town neglected to raise the flag on the World War I monument, I got upset.
All right, let's stick to David, thank you so much.
So I would like to just-
Yeah, before Don speaks, we're going to respond to some things you said that were not true, that we can't let go, for the record. Also, as you know, I just want people to point out, we did protect the Memorial Grove over at Morlot Park, and I'm in contact with a lot of the veteran, people in the veterans' organizations, some I've known my whole life since I was a kid, and they're not being represented here, but not one of them has come up and said the same thing, you have, things you have said today, just like when we met last week at Morlot Park, there were other veterans there, families whose great, memorials are there, that were in disagreement with you. So I just don't want people to think that you're speaking for all veterans and veterans' groups here, because that is not the case. You know what I'm talking about, we were in Byram, and some people who were there did not agree with anything you were saying that day, so I just want people to know, you're speaking for yourself right now. And so, and so, before Don speaks-
Fred, can we either take those issues now, or you can refer to it at another meeting?
Well, you could refer, we could refer to it anytime you want, but you do not, there are lots of veterans that have reached out to me that do not agree with some of the things you've been saying, whether here or in Byram, so we'll go, but that's, we have to go to another meeting now. Jim, would you please respond, and then Don, you have the floor.
Can I just-
No, no, Jim needs to respond now.
Here's the map that you have introduced, I would like to ask you, where is the Civil War monument?
We, Jim, just go to the mic, and, thank you.
The three monuments that I pointed out, we're not doing anything or touching those at all.
Thank you, and is there any, any disrupt, Don, you're up next, there's no, is there any, no, sir, I just said that we have another, we have to go to executive, we're already late for that. You've made your points, but you've also gone into other areas where we're not, this is about this intersection here, not talking about that, but you said there's been disruption, none of these things are going to be disrupted when the work is done. None of them will be disrupted, none.
Okay, let me just, one point, Fred. The road is, the road is going to move twenty-five to thirty-five feet in towards the Board of Ed, correct?
Within the right-of-way.
Okay. Just yesterday, I got a topographic map from the town showing how that hillside elevates. How are you going to solve that? If you go twenty-five, thirty-five feet in, how much elevation would you have to solve with a retaining wall or some other way?
The project is currently in a preliminary design phase, that's what municipal improvement is intended for. As we get further along there, we'll fine-tune the actual design and know the exact elevations. We do not anticipate any retaining walls being done there, because of the real, the re-elevate, the elevations that we're going to need to match at that intersection, so we do not anticipate impacting the trees, impacting roots, and needing to put a place of retaining wall there.
Thank you, Jim. Back, Don.
Okay, hi, Don Sylvester, from Greenwich. Since Dave covered most of the veteran points of this, I'd just like to say, you know, when that intersection was laid out more than a hundred years ago, that was the center of Greenwich, that was the Greenwich green. The person who laid it out had a vision, the Smith Building, the Town Hall, the Havemeyer Building. All of a sudden here, a hundred and something years later, someone comes along and says, oh, you know, we're, we're going to move the road, no, no problem, we're going to open up the area, get rid of the green. That was, that was the center of Greenwich. Like I say, laid out with a vision. For twelve parking spaces, have you, sir, have you looked at any other alternatives for parking in the area? It's a question.
We've looked at a variety of alternatives, the key point of the improvements that we're making is to align the intersections for traffic safety.
Okay, now, when you say traffic safety, I mean, has there been that many accidents at that intersection? The only safety, the only safety I could see in jeopardy, police cars, fire engines, leaving the, the firehouse, crossing that intersection, going to help someone on the thruway, being slowed down at that intersection, that, the, the problem would be to where they're going, the people involved in an accident, that's where the safety is. Having a policeman at that intersection would alleviate all that problem.
Thank, thank you, Don, we, yeah, we've, we've already litigated that one, and we already have the bumpout at the intersection of Elm Street, and it has not slowed down the fire trucks, they will tell you that, that is, ma'am.
They've told me differently, and I know-
Well, I can tell you, I, well, listen, the-
I know firemen, listen, I know firemen.
And I know firemen too, and I know your son's one, and I have lots of friends, and I know that, I speak every day with the fireman, fire chief, and the police chief, that does not slow them down, it does not. And we, we did, we did the six o'clock in the morning test run of that, and you keep, you keep bringing up a hundred and twenty years ago. A hundred and twenty years ago, we didn't have cars, right? We didn't have people, pedestrians going there all the time. Everything evolves, Don, and you know that. So we obviously, we're trying to not only make this safer, and that's why the complete streets is being done all over the country, but we're also adding more green, right? We're adding actually a net pickup of green space there, and more soil and less impervious surface. We're actually, we're adding parking, and we're, and we're actually looking at other things to add more parking, without doing ugly standalone parking structures that have been, as you know, proposed in the past, that lots of us did not like. Thank God that they weren't put up, but we're working on lots of things, but things evolve, so this is not a hundred and twenty years ago. Again, your question about whether these three things will be affected, no, they will not be disrupted during the work. And, and again, the, the, you know, the other issues, we've already gone over, but things, we're trying to bring things up to two thousand and twenty-two while really respecting our past, but also trying to enhance things for the future. I grew up here, I was born and raised here, I love this town like no other, and that's why I volunteer here my whole adult life. And so when I hear people coming here and sometimes, you know, casting aspersions and trying to insinuate that, you know, follow the money and see who's, it's insulting, it really is insulting, and I think people see through it, I really do. So I appreciate your thoughts, and we'll, you know, when we go through this, this whole process, we'll make sure that, you know, all your thoughts are incorporated, just like we did at the skating rink, right? You asked to be on that committee, and you're on there, and-
Well, I haven't been invited to any meetings either.
Oh, they'll, they'll invite you, okay. Well, send me a note, and you'll be, because you're on the committee, so, anyway, I, but I appreciate that.
Well, there's two other points, though, I just want to make quickly.
Sure.
You know, just getting to public safety, I believe Salt Lake City, they have main roads that are like eighty or a hundred feet wide, they were done that way at the turn of the century for horse wagons to turn around. They haven't, they haven't narrowed them streets down any for pedestrians, so using the fact of pedestrian safety, when they have to cross a street that wide, and I've crossed the street that in Salt Lake City, absolutely no, no problem.
And Salt Lake's a little different than that guy.
Well, no, they still have increased traffic.
Heavy parts do.
Just like we do. Parking, okay, let's get to the parking spaces. How about, you have the, the bowling place, you have the Havemeyer Building parking lot there, you could do underground parking there, it wouldn't change-
We are looking into that.
Wouldn't, yeah, okay, so why go into something like this then, when you could add X amount of spaces there?
Because that, that, that is, that is nowhere close to being done right now, and the merchants we talked to, they're begging for, and landlords there, they're begging for more spaces, so wherever and whatever we can do, and this one was actually, as we mentioned several times, is fully paid for in a grant, money that we send up to the state, so if we're adding twelve spaces, I'm sure, rather than say, you know, we don't want this twelve spaces, because we're going to wait for another four or five years to get underground parking, right? And that, I guarantee you, once I put that out there, there'll be people here against that too. It just, it's the nature of everything, right? People come out to oppose, for whatever reason, and that's fine, questions are a good thing, debate makes our policies that much better. But again, we, these are a given, these are, right, now this is like a gift of twelve spaces, let's take them, because they, these merchants and restaurants are begging for more parking, and we're trying, wherever we can, with, again, not adding ugly standalone parking garages, which is not Greenwich.
Yeah, but you wouldn't even see that one, and for twelve spaces, how many spaces have we taken away already on the avenue with the bumpouts that we've done? And, and these little green patches, these little green patches that we're putting, what do we gain? What are we gaining from them? They have to be maintained, they have to be watered, unless everything's going to die in them, that little bit of green, it's absolutely, in my opinion, it's a waste of money, and the three million dollars, you say, well, it's a grant, well, it's still our money, it's still state money.
And I always hear that, we don't get money back, we get, we've sent all this money up, we've sent fifteen percent of the state's revenue, one town out of a hundred and sixty-nine, and I've heard ever since I was a little kid, we need to get more money back. Well, we're getting your money back, and you're still not happy with it.
No.
So anyway, but I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, and we'll get you on that list, make sure that you get those invitations. Okay, we're, I know we're, are they waiting? Oh. Okay, if you can please bring up things that have not been raised, that would be great, because we are now a half hour late, sorry.
Hi, Jane Sprung, District Ten, RTM, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and some other concerned residents, and thank you for your time. We all know that the bumpouts, you know, they've been highly debated, as everyone said, the bumpouts passed by sixteen votes, I think the community is still deeply divided about them, and so I appreciate that you are listening to feedback and not going to rush this process. I still don't have a clear answer, everyone's asked the same question, we're getting twelve parking spots, but how many are we taking away from the avenue? For one, I don't have an answer. Number two, just a personal anecdote, my eighty-eight and eighty-nine-year-old in-laws who've visited Greenwich for thirty years can no longer go to the avenue because they can't find a parking spot closer, close enough to the business or restaurant that they want to go to, and twelve spots off the avenue really aren't going to be helpful, so I don't think that we're, you know, thoroughly thinking about the needs of the elderly and people that need to park close to the restaurants and close to the businesses, so I'd like you to consider that in your plan. And also, all the points made up about the historic district, what was in the application, what wasn't in the application, there is a lot of divide about that, it's not clear to me, even though the monuments aren't going to be touched, that we aren't seriously inhibiting the historic aspects of Greenwich Avenue, and even- seriously inhibiting the historic aspects of Greenwich Avenue, and even though, you know, we're all older, et cetera, and things change, we don't have to destroy our past to change things, and also take away a lot of parking spots to change things. So anyway, I thank you for your time.
Jane, thank you, as always, for your thoughtful comments, and yeah, it's, as I've mentioned, was it three years ago, we ran on a slogan, "Respect for our past and vision for the future." Again, I'm, I was one of the people that didn't want the cops off the avenue, even though it was a total waste of their manpower, manpower, and not the most efficient way of policing, I was used to it, and I liked it, and, but I try to be, you know, marry that great past that we have, and, and that's why we fought things, we're fighting things like 8-30G, and we fought standalone parking structures. But that doesn't mean all progress stops, and we did, to your point about the elderly, we added four 15-minute spots last year, and that's not enough, we need to do more, that's hard, that's the hardest part. Parking, the 12 spaces are not, you say they're off the avenue, they're literally, literally feet away from the avenue. I consider the avenue because it's right there. I mean, it's not like it's three blocks away, it's right there.
But it's still far for someone who's in their 80s or elderly who can't walk very well, they can't really cross the streets. I mean, they need to be right in front of the buildings or right in front of the restaurants, and there's significant parking being taken away on Greenwich Avenue in addition to these 12 new spots, and we still don't have a number on that, so it's not clear.
When you say that we, we do have a number on that, we've, we've put those numbers out. The total, if you did from, from top to bottom, which we're not even there yet, because we want to see, make people comfortable with Elm Street and this, it was a net loss of four or five, and I don't even like that, but...
That's like highly debatable, depends, I guess, who you talk to.
That's what, the, again, if you can produce them again and send it to me, and I'll send it out to everybody, that would be great, Jim, but...
I can handle the fire right here, that's the net gain and loss of each intersection, so...
But does that include the restaurants?
No.
Outdoor dining is a separate situation.
Yeah, here's the thing, that's...
So that's, that's where we lose a lot.
So do you, would you, I would ask you, and I heard the lady over here mumble about outdoor dining, would, I wonder if we took outdoor dining, if you'd win that vote in the town of Greenwich? That, that has transformed downtown. It is a trade-off, we've lost some parking spaces with, but people love outdoor dining. We talked about doing it prior to the pandemic, and I knew it was kind of a stretch because people were going to complain about parking. People love it, and I'm just saying, if you put that out to a vote, that would be one of those 90-10 votes.
Yeah, that's not what I'm asking for.
No, but I've heard the comments.
But thank you, yeah, no, thank you, but it's, there's just a lot of divide in the community, as you can see, this barely passed the RTM, and I really, I really hope that you're not going to, you know, that the first selectman, listen to these comments, and don't try to rush this through without careful review and more RTM review.
I don't think it could have more discussion than we've had, and we've, in, since 2019, we've had public forums. When we closed the bottom of Greenwich Avenue down for two blocks, and then the last block to that restaurant row, people loved it, but there were nine merchants that did not like it, so we listened to them, we opened it up, and then they came and visited me office to thank me, but all we did, didn't have to thank me, all we did was listen to them, and they made some good points. You know, I kind of loved the fact it was closed off and people could eat there and their kids could play in the street, but if it was going to hurt somebody, that's why, that's why we always continue to listen. So I don't think any idea is a bad idea, and we certainly, you know, when people have come to me and said that they wanted to be in a committee, they weren't represented, we put them on there. And so we're constantly listening, and, and we've had a lot of, you know, public outreach and education on it, but I mean, I don't, in this case, I don't know how to answer the same questions over and over and over again when the answers and the questions are the same. So, you know, you have that list there for the total spaces, we are looking at, you know, the underground parking possibly to be built into the grade, where you look at the Board of Ed building, if you go around the back where there's 20 spaces roughly where the baseball field is, you can go under there. Now, I don't know how many we can get, but that's right there. Now, is that technically on the avenue? No, it's not, but it's still feet away, and it's better than being two blocks away or three blocks away, or down at, you know, Arch Street, or, you know, Horse Neck Lane, but it's still close. But, you know, we're, we're trying to help also the people who live on the avenue, which we know a lot, many of them, and they love walking around there and everything, but they worry about sometimes...
Yeah, and there's many people that don't live anywhere near the avenue that just wanted the convenience of coming in and leaving and parking, so anyway, I thank you for your time, there's a lot of divide, and I hope that this doesn't get pushed through quickly without going through the RTM again.
Thank you, we're, we're doing, we're following the process, and again, I grew up here, and I could tell you, there was always, you know, there was always issues of parking, and we, for three years, have been working at, you know, addressing that problem. So whether it's 15-minute spaces, or adding parking here, or looking at other, we even had a RFP out and did a trial run for valet parking, which, with the response, we did it for two weekends, it was pretty good, we maybe took 15 cars off of it, but other than that, when we did the RFP, it was very, very expensive, but we're looking at as many things as possible to do that, because, look, I go around, if I, if I don't walk down there, which I do every day, if I'm ever driving down here on the way to the office and I stop, stop there, I, I can't find spaces, and I have to keep, but that's been that way since I was a little kid, so we, that's why we continue to look at as many possible options as possible, and if you have any ideas, send them over.
Guess my idea would be not do anything until we have more resolved resolution. Thank you.
We've had enough on this, and we'll continue to follow the process, thank you.
Good morning. I'm Louisa Stone, I'm also from District 10. I wanted to speak about this at the RTM, but was cut off after two minutes, and I know you're tight on time now, but I'm not against bump outs, and I've heard some opponents of this plan say that they're against Fred Camillo. Well, I'm not against Fred Camillo, but I've noticed that, this is meant to be a hearing, but I've been hearing a lot of argument going on, so just let me, please, I'll try to put it briefly. As you said, Fred, we all loved having cops on the streets, on the corners, but the, the cops didn't like it, and they're doing a better job of crime prevention on foot and on bicycle. So then we had only stop signs, and then we added bump outs. Well, the town's survey of public opinion about the Elm Street came, bump outs, came out 50-50. The RTM committees before the full meeting also came out exactly 50-50, and in the full RTM meeting, this was approved by a margin of 18 votes out of over 200. In our family, if we had a 50-50 split, we didn't do something, and it saved us a lot of costly mistakes. This plan would widen Arch Street, take out a stretch of the lawn in the front yard of the Havemar Building, where there are Beech Trees and Colonel Bowling's monument for the, marking the end of the First World War. The loss of lawn and the likely damage to those trees would be permanent and irreversible. Bump outs do shorten the distance across roads, but they don't stop drivers or pedestrians in a hurry. They can't help people crossing the street, they can't give directions. If we vote for this, if we execute this plan, I said, if we vote in the RTM, it will change our main street forever. Other forms of traffic control, stop signs, police, lights, can be changed easily, but not bump outs. Let's consider the alternatives. Let's consider, conduct a public opinion survey to learn if Greenwich voters want bump outs, traffic lights, or policemen on the corners. I can visualize a welcoming crossing guard at the Arch Street intersection, like the wonderful man who was there in the 70s, but I may be dreaming. Since the op-ed piece or letter that I sent out two weeks ago, I have had 30 responses, only two disagreed with me, Fred Camillo and James Michael. Bottom line, we all want safety, we all want to preserve the natural landscape, the historic recognition, and so on. It's a tough thing to do, and we know that you are listening, I think the general public is listening, we know that this will go to planning and zoning. We haven't discussed the traffic problems that would result from parking diagonally on the east side of Arch Street. We have, there are a lot of, lot more problems than you have heard about tonight, today, but thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for, for speaking with us today and giving us your, your thoughts. It's, oh, Davida, how are you?
Good morning. We could certainly, the grass strip there in front of it, we could certainly talk about that and revisit that, I mean, I don't think that's a game changer, so we could certainly look at that, so thank you. How are you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you very much for inviting some of the public to speak, I appreciate it. My name is Davida Strackfine, and I am here wearing a hat that is from the Greenwich 375th Anniversary of the Town of Greenwich. At the time, in 2015, with the help of Mr. Michael and, and the first selectman, Peter Tessie, at the time, we installed a historic municipal center sign that would identify the, it's, I believe, 21.6 acres in the Greenwich Municipal Center Historic District, which defines actually the beautiful municipal buildings still standing, and thank you for ensuring the preservation of the former Greenwich Post Office Building, that was wonderful. But what happened in the new plan was that not only the Little Civil War, it's, it's a very small monument, it's a small stone, piece of stone, which was put there by the veterans who lived through the Civil War and the anniversary in 1914, and they were lined up, there were 25 of them, and they lined up in front of Town Hall in, in a wonderful ceremony, crossed the street. Yes, and placed that small stone there. The speeches they gave were really heartrending about the preservation of life, about liberty and freedom. It's, it's far more than that little stone, but it's important that you preserve that little stone, and in the plan also, the marker, which I brought, a picture of it for all to see, right?
Thank you.
Was, with the help of Mr. Michael, installed in front of the Board of Ed Education Building. It has, it has a map of the entire area that is considered the municipal historic district, and it also has a description of how it, you know, evolved, and the places and the markers that are historic, and I was pleased this morning, when I came a little early, to hear that in fact it had not disappeared, and I'm sure the stone has not disappeared, and that by working with Mr. Michael, as he explained to me, we can put it in, in a place that in fact does, as, as we explained when we installed it, and it was installed by the Greenwich Preservation Network, which is an organization that was formed by the Greenwich Historical Society in, in 2015, right? To work with people in the town of Greenwich to ensure that, or to foster town-wide community projects to educate the community about the value of historic preservation of the landscapes for the long-term benefit of the Town of Greenwich, and streetscapes is a term which they use to include buildings. The historic district signage grew out of that group's first meeting as an agreed-upon directive that would have an immediate educational impact throughout the Town of Greenwich, and provide a viable and very visible initial network preservation test project approved by the Preservation Network and endorsed by the Town of Greenwich. The sign was installed, and the project fulfilled the Greenwich 375th Anniversary's mission, that historic signage, which honored the town's rich cultural heritage, by sharing, preserving, and fostering memories of the past and present, would create a fitting legacy for tomorrow. I thank you for moving the sign, making sure that it is preserved, and I think that it's wonderful that you were able to work through the issues, the important issues, for the Town of Greenwich, that will preserve the historic, wonderful, rich heritage that we have in the Town of Greenwich. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Davida, I really appreciate that. We certainly, when we go through this, we've heard today that in front of the monument, we would have like a, a little platform there for people to gather there, but if it's, if the town decides that they want to see the grass remain there, and we could certainly do a, a little survey or public hearing on that and get some feedback on it, I mean, that, that's just, we want to make sure that the monument, obviously it's not going to be touched, which is great, but trying to always enhance things like we're doing in Byram now, so if, if you all deem, the town deems that, you know, we'd like to see the grass stay, or we'd like to see, you know, more grass or, you know, less grass, we're open to that, we just want to make sure that that is preserved and that it remains a, a destination and a place of honor that really means a lot to our town and our history, so...